At 5:03 PM and now I will get to the announcements, the meeting being recorded by the recording clerk by Zoom. In the event that the connection is lost at any time during the meeting and device being used by the recording clerk for the purpose of taking minutes. Mr. Gant, is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting?
I would.
Thank you. While we are conducting town business using remote participation by Zoom, we ask if those of you not recognized by the chair or otherwise engaged in the discussion at the moment, please mute your microphones. Hi, everyone.
Marshall.
Evening. Good evening, everybody.
Yeah, I was at Masco as recently as like four minutes ago, so. Um, we have a whole slew of items. The first item on the agenda that I see has to do with the recreation department and I see that Stephanie is here, but I imagine we'll start with you, Kevin.
Yes, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you. I just want to frame this, then I'll hand it over to Ms. Sweeney to provide further updates and answer specific questions. We also have Superintendent Wilds with us tonight, who's also been closely involved in this process that the rec department's undertaking as it, there is some overlap there as well. One of the things that our rec director, he's been tasked with and has been working on is an overview and revamp, or I guess is a way to put it, of our existing policies, a review of the policies and move forward with any changes and updates that are necessary with our existing policies on a number of fronts. This being a work session, there is no intention or ask for a vote tonight from the board. This is intended for the board to ask questions and at a future regular meeting, we will present this for a formal vote. But again, Ms. Sweeney's done some really great work and we want to make sure she has a chance to share with everybody. I will also mention that there is some overlap with some of what we're looking at, the policies and procedures. Those are pretty straightforward, but one of the things we're looking at is the revenue side, an update and assessment of how we're doing when it comes to the fees associated with use of fields. And there's an overlap with the budget process and Superintendent Wilds Department and the Park and Cemetery. As any changes to the fee structure, there should be a corresponding positive result in the delivery of services. And so there is some overlap with the budget process and the capacities that Mr. Wilds has on his team. So we've reached out to Topsfield's TAA as we've worked hand in glove with them and been very transparent about everything we've done that involves recreation for the last two years, since Gary and I have been in the positions we have been in and since Ms. Sweeney joined us a handful of months ago. And so we have had a chance to provide this to the TAA for their review. And we are scheduling hopefully a meeting for next week to now go through it with them in a little bit more detail, explaining the potential rate changes, et cetera, as well as some of the policies and how that might impact them and get their feedback. And because we do work, we are a partnership. But I will just say one last time, there's a lot of really great work that's gone into this, a lot of thoughtfulness for the rec department and the departments that have helped Stephanie compiling information and data and answer questions. And we're excited to be able to roll out an updated policy that I think will serve well for the community now and for some, for a good amount of time in the future as well. So I'll stop talking and I'll just hand this over to our rec director, Stephanie. It's all yours.
Cam, were you going to say something?
You know, Stephanie, Stephanie, I was, but I realized I should probably wait for you to talk. So I'll wait.
I'd just like to, I'd just like to break in here and welcome her because this is kind of like Stephanie's debut. And so this is interesting. We're all, we're all anxious to hear from, hear from you, Stephanie. Thank you.
Well, I'm anxious to hear from all of you as well. Debbie sent you all the drafts of all the documents we've been updating, the policies. I don't know if you all had time to review it, but tonight I would definitely love your input on the content that's here of what we're updating and answer any questions you may have. If you see anything that may need to be changed, that's like an apostrophe here, a comma there, please feel free to email me. Debbie did put the Word documents up on Board Docs so they can be edited. So if you want to make any notes and add them there, you can do that and get them back to me. But I really just wanted to share the content, especially the policies that have been updated to see what your thoughts are, if they align with the town views and make sense. And some of them already existed. A lot of them are new. I looked into other departments to see what they do and their verbiage they use, see if it made sense for us. I did some comps as well from other departments on what their field fees are. Because the structure is a little bit different there as well. We added some options for hourly rates. So if someone for one day wants to reserve a field for a couple hours or, and then we divided it up in regards to adult and youth athletic leagues, which is different from the past where they've always just done a flat rate. This was, we're looking into changing it to a per participant rate per season. We thought that might work well with our Tops Field structure, the amount of leagues that utilize our fields right now. So it made a lot of sense to us. It kind of matches, that dollar amount matches the use of the field of how many children or adults step on that field and use it. So I don't know if you guys want to go through document by document, or if you just have things you want to point out or question. Yes, Cam?
I would, now I would like to ask you a question, Stephanie. Without a point of reference for how much has changed here, you know, comparative docs. I guess my, my main question is, what are the most significant additions or new documentation that you've developed? You know, the stuff that's been going 10 years in a row, okay, but what's, what's the biggest thing to you or things to you that you've added?
Probably, probably the policy update. There was some good, there was a good starting point that we had, but I got a little bit more in depth and detailed. So like the parks and recreation, fields, facility, general use and reservation policies. Originally it was about a page and a half, two pages, and now it's six, I believe. So I just wanted to cover all bases, whether it's regards to refunds, liability insurance, Board of Health review, if we do bring in some camps that want to use our fields, quarry background checks, and just eligibility use. That's a big one. So, and just get detailed on what's going to be needed when they submit their application. And if their reservation gets approved, these are the documents that follow it up, especially for the leagues. They have to supply liability insurance. All their coaches have to have quarry checks if they're working with youth under 18, which is a big one. Providing their schedules so we know this is when your season starts, this is when your season ends, so DPW can properly maintain the fields. So just really going in depth with that, I did update our application and actually created a fee schedule on the back to detail it out so they would have that when they're filling out the application to get an idea, okay, this is what it'll probably cost us to rent for this day and time. And I did create a permit. We did not have a permit before, so now they can have a permit on hand. So for some reason, there's a question about if they should be there on the field at that time, yes, the rec department supplied us a permit to be here. And then this is, they always had this with their policies. They would have the league sign off saying, we received a copy of your rules, regulations and policies. We're acknowledging this, so we're signing off. I changed it a little bit so they'll actually receive that packet of the policies for a copy of for themselves to keep. And then they'll get like this little bit of a receipt to sign for us and I can make a copy for them so they have it where they're acknowledging it. I made it separate from the policies before. It was all one together. Now I just kind of made it separate. And then we made a couple of changes to the common and gazebo reservation use policies because that is a little bit unique. I did mention in it to reference the other policies because those should all apply since it is a town park, green space. But it's also kind of different because it's unique where it's located and some things that can take place there. So we didn't change too much there, but did add a couple of things. So really, we just kind of moved things around and then went really in depth on those policies and then added a permit.
So I have one kind of general question, at least I think it's a general question. So I'll start with that. You mentioned, I think, eligibility to rent. And so is there a standard kind of who is eligible to rent a space and who isn't, or is it vary on the space we're talking about?
Yeah, so anyone can submit an application to use a field. The biggest thing though is that if it's an out of town organization, that Tops Field organizations take priority if we receive two similar inquiries at the same time. So if they want the same timeframe and one is TAA and one is an out of town youth organization, TAA gets priority because they're Tops Field. And then we just kind of stated in here, anyone who is town affiliated, whether it's a board, committee, town department, or Masco or Tops Field School District Team, they can use the field for free since they're affiliated that way. But really Tops Field organizations get priority and we kind of go from there. And then if we have availability outside of those Tops Field organizations that get priority, we will fit other organizations in for sure.
And so my kind of specific question is I'm looking at the list of available areas to rent. And for instance, like I don't know how we would ever be able to, to rent the Disc Golf Course, given that it stretches like a ribbon throughout the entirety of Pi Brook Park. So that one might be a little bit difficult. So I'm just curious if, have all of these things been eligible to rent before, or is this just pretty much a list of everything we have in town and went ahead and put it on there as a list of something?
Yeah, on the fee schedule, I listed what amenities are at each park. And obviously, anyone can use the parks when they're open during the day. You're free to go, first come, first served. You're welcome to go walk your dog or play a pickup game. But we're trying to reach people who are consistently using the parks at the same time, the same day of the week, like the youth organization or adult sports that come. So this is just a reference point. If they do want to utilize a certain space and make sure it is available for them, if they have a permit in hand, they can use it. And as for Disc Golf, yeah, that's a pre-recreational amenity anyone can use. I was kind of including that as a state of reference point that we do have that available at Pi Brook. But I've also heard that, you know, some tournaments kind of bounce around an organization. So if we do get approached by them, we do have a dollar amount to work with, or if it's a whole day event, we can work with them with like a special event rate and do something like that if it's going to bring a larger crowd to Tops Field and to Pi Brook.
Okay.
Stephanie, I was, I was a little bit confused. I went through every one of these documents and I saw that you had an hourly figure of $20 and $30. And, and then I saw that participant fee. Explain to me how the, it seems to me like the two different kinds of things. Tell me about that.
They totally are, exactly. So the upper portion, the hourly rate resident versus non-resident, that's if someone wants to run maybe a one day clinic for three hours. So they want to reserve the softball field at Clock Park for three hours. So it'll be $60. But then the adult and youth athletic fee, the per participant per season, that starting point we're kind of working with at $10 is for like TAA, Masco Youth Football, who come and use it consistently throughout a period of time. So they're here in the spring season from April to early June. Say that's how long their soccer season is for TAA. And they're here consistently at these days and times for practice and then they have games every Saturday. It's so, they just, we would charge $10 per participant per season to accommodate, that would be their field fee now versus before they used to pay a flat dollar amount. This would just kind of be per player that steps onto the field and for that season. So yeah, they are very different. Yeah.
I got it. I understand it. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yep, no problem. And is there anything else that was blaring when you all reviewed it or have questions about further regarding policies? Oh, I did want to bring up Lynn, since she couldn't be here, did email me a couple of things. So I just wanted to clarify because I actually spoke with Steve Shepherd today to get an answer, who was the previous DPW superintendent, to see what his answer would be. So in the policies in number 11, it said that no person shall sail, drive and float any boat or raft, nor construct any dams in or on any waterways or ponds of the Parks Department. So this was an existing policy and Lynn just questioned it because she thought it referenced Hoods Pond. So she was like, but I'm pretty sure people bring paddle boats out there and canoe and kayak, which is totally fine. This is in regards to any water that's on Pi Brook or Clock Park property. So within the park. So there is some ponds there, some waterways and streams. So they were just, we're going to probably try and reword that to clarify within the parks because Hoods Pond is its own entity. So I did communicate with Lynn and we got that clarified. But I just wanted to bring that up in case any of you were questioning it as well. So that was one of the things that she had mentioned and Steve was wonderful and was able to give me some feedback on that. So.
As Cam had mentioned, Stephanie, sometimes it's helpful to see where we were and what the changes are. So perhaps it's helpful to get, at least in the case of the fees, what the fees were and how they've changed. It helps us evaluate what we're actually implementing differently than we've had before. Although the board never, the Board of Selectmen never specified things that part, as you point out, Steve, you talked with Steve, they had their various. So it'd be interesting to see the differences there. And also in order to make comments a little bit easier, the documents, if they could be available in Word format versus PDF format.
Yes, they are available now on Board Docs in Word format for you. They were just posted today.
Yeah, under administrative content, Dick, they're available as docs.
Initially Debbie did email them as PDFs and then today we uploaded them with the Word doc.
Oh, thank you.
Yep, no problem.
I think there's a good bit that we perhaps, we really need to go through them as you kind of pointed out.
There's a lot.
Here getting this thing together. But just, just for some discussion a little bit, for example, the common and gazebo, it talks about dawn to dusk. One of the things that has worked out, and this is where we can discuss it more, but to give you a feel for the kinds of discussions we may have. There's, the gazebo does have a light in it and at times during the summer, it's been a place where perhaps some of the teenagers would get together. Of course, the police have a question as to whether or what, but they need a place to get together sometimes. And that has worked out reasonably well. They're out in the open, they can have a good time. And secondly, we have a skating rink there that's open after dusk. So I think we want to be careful with kind of the words that we put together in some of these cases that they carefully match what we think we want to do. But that's where we all have a chance to provide various thoughts and inputs to you. But you've provided the, the basic starting point and I appreciate that very much.
Oh, you're welcome. And yeah, some of that is verbiage from the previous policies. They just put dawn to dusk. But yeah, if we want to put or leave it open ended, or as long as no one's causing trouble at the gazebo at 10 o'clock at night and then, I mean, that should be fine.
And for example, there may be things that we should have, but maybe they're not necessary to have. For example, any of the signage, I don't know that we really want to try to repeat something that's a given thing within the town as far as signage. We know how it's done. Board of Selectmen approves any special signage that goes up in the common, that sort of thing. Nobody's allowed to put up advertising on town property, but those are given things way outside of Recreation Department. They're just town wide. So we may make some comments there to keep it clean. So it's easy for people to read. Sometimes you have to put it in there because it's known to be always a problem that somebody wants to do this thing. And yeah, the town says we have laws to do it, but it's also helpful to tell people on multiple venues that this is not, this is not permitted or something. But I think in the case, for example, of signage, we really haven't had a problem and we deal with it, I think. So that's just some thoughts, but those are up for us, those are for us to make comments on after we have a chance to go through them in more detail and with Doc format, that'll be great. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Just a comment question for Marshall. You probably had more input into this situation in the past than any of us here. And I'm sure that you and Gretchen have some feelings about that. Your thoughts?
I mean, what I would say is this overhaul that I'm looking at here is desperately needed. I think Kevin can attest, last summer, when we were still heavy into COVID lockdowns, we were trying really hard to get some, you know, allowed usage of open spaces for, you know, things like yoga classes and Boy Scouts just because, you know, these businesses had all been shut down, or not even businesses, but organizations had all been shut down. And they couldn't get back together inside, but we wanted to encourage people to get together outside. And in doing that and trying to come up with policies, I mean, I found that a lot of the policies were photocopies of photocopies of photocopies from 30 years ago. And that is the only way that they existed. They didn't exist on any computer anywhere. And so even just, I mean, even if not a thing here had been changed, other than taking a copy that we pulled out of a file cabinet and typing it into the computer, we would have made a great leap forward. But this is clearly also an eye toward modernizing and the policies and thinking about how they're applied to how people want to use these places today. So having not gone through all of these with the nitty gritty comb yet, I can just say that the effort in and of itself is a tremendous step forward. And wherever we end up with it, we're going to be in a much better place than we were before this started.
Thank you very much.
And to kind of piggyback off that, between what Dick asked and what Marshall, you said about finding out what we charged in the past, there's, it's been hard to find a lot on that. And I found one document from 2005 that was around $800 for a flat fee for a season, but now it's lately been 750 the last like few years or so. So it's been hard to find it. So kind of relooking at that and trying to find a more purposeful way to price, like when a league comes in and uses our fields consistently, this just made sense to me, doing the per participant per rate. And looking at some other surrounding towns that do it, like Beverly offers it in one of their tiers for local communities. Hamilton, Wenham, Manchester by the Sea, Dover, Sudbury, some of them are significantly higher. But Hamilton, Wenham, Beverly and Manchester by the Sea all do $10 per person per season as well. But I just thought that made sense, but it was so hard finding some past fees and everything like Marshall said was paper. So there's boxes and boxes and boxes.
And I will say that in my time on Park and Cemetery, I don't recall if we had specific permit, you know, request for field use and how we handled it, but I got a tremendous sense that it probably would have been dealt with on a case by case basis. Like, oh, well, you know, we know you guys. So yeah, come on in and you know, we'll take care of it. Or we have no idea who you are, so you're going to pay more. Again, that didn't come up specifically in my time there, but just in my sense of the conversations, I think that that's why we probably don't have a lot of documentation that's up to date. Because I don't know that it was all necessarily documented.
Well, I'd just like to add that, you know, this, this whole thing evolved into parks and cemeteries and it was kind of shoved in your face, Marshall, you and Gretchen and Steve. And you guys all had other things to do. So it wound up being a pretty haphazard kind of organization. So it doesn't surprise me that a lot of this stuff was not documented or organized the way it should have been.
And, and that should be in no way construed as any sort of criticism of Steve Shepherd. I think I've made clear.
No way, no way.
Plate was, he had two plates full of stuff and still couldn't get to this. It's just, it was how it was set up at that point.
Well, we got another guy sitting right here. He's got the same issue and that's Mr. Wilds. He's, he's got a pretty full plate and I suspect that he and Stephanie are going to be spending a little bit of time together. Trying to figure out how to organize this and set it all up and make it work.
All right. So with that, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dick. Some of the work on the Park and Cemetery was really done with writing. They, they were pretty good about documenting what they wanted and when they made arrangements with somebody documenting it back. Because I remember Bob Benjamin was always in writing. It was one of his comments. The second thought is yes, that there were at times some changes in the way various financing for use of the fields, but it was sometimes a negotiation that said, okay, so you're going to take care of putting in lines in and you're going to move some clay if you want it for a mound. Okay, then we won't do that and the rate will be this much instead of if we try to do it all. So there were those kinds of things that were done from kind of, in some ways I would consider practical, but almost on a human basis, where the team was willing to do something to reduce the case or vice versa. So that's some of the history.
That's, that's the way things always got done in the old days. You, you did what you had to do to make it work.
And fit what the people wanted. I mean, that, that's kind of what it was. Instead of something arbitrary, it kind of fit what the circumstances were and the people wanted. And I mean, I, my sense is that the demand for these green spaces is greater now than it was then as well. And frankly, in some cases, Harm or Field, we have more green spaces than we used to have. So, you know, again, I think the time is, is, is right to do this. Is there anything else on recreation before we move forward?
Stephanie, I'm just to say thank you. It looks like you've done a good job so far. We're looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say for next item, next action items on this, for the deliverable. If you have any comments, I know we received from Sherbemuthis comments on, from the documents that are posted. If anyone has any documents, please share with Stephanie. Hopefully I ask by Monday if possible, so we can keep this moving in a timely fashion because we do have the seasons starting to roll out and registration happening. But it is welcomed and we do appreciate the conversation and the hope we'll be able to incorporate that, the comments that, that fit and bring this back. Once we work with the TAA and other stakeholders and finalizing all the last details of this, back for a final vote. Probably target the end of the month at that regular meeting then if possible, if everything comes to fruition.
Okay. Comments by Monday ideally. Next item on the Price is Right Tops Field Fairgrounds. And as I often do, I'll turn my lonely eyes to Kevin to tell us what we're talking about here.
Mr. Vice Chair, so questions have been brought up recently regarding how the Tops Field Fair is taxed. I think it might've been part of the conversation with the liquor license that has, has raised questions from, I know members of the community reached out to me around the taxation of the fairgrounds. I spoke with the assessor last week, Tula, and she provided me some clarity and relevant information. And seeing how we have our public hearing at the end of the month continuation, I thought it might be helpful just to share with the board how the fairgrounds is taxed, as we do have the license in front of us for consideration. And it is somewhat unique. It's not a standard subdivision or a commercial space. It's an over 200 year old fair that we, we have in our town. So I'm just going to go through some talking points, then we've got some items on Board Docs that hopefully everyone's had a chance to see. We can talk to that and then answer any questions. And if there's questions I can answer, I will. If there's specific questions, I'll get back with our assessor to get those answers back to the board as needed. But previously, the Board of Assessors had a study performed in 2003 by a third party to assess the property and to make the proper assessment determinations on behalf of the town. These recommendations are what the Board of Assessors use for taxation on the property today. In Tops Field, we have a single tax rate rather than a split tax rate. So regardless of the zoning and the zoning and the use, commercial and residential, the tax rate is the same. The fair property is zoned as agricultural. However, for 11.87 acres of that land and the improvements on it, they're exempt from taxation based on the Mass General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, which provides exemption for agricultural use. On the map that was shared, it's the buildings when you come into the main entrance, the administrative building, bee building, flower building, the ones that are really truly agricultural for the fair. The midway and other areas, the open, the other lots, the parking lots, et cetera, those are, are not within the exemption, exempted area. So the vast majority of the acreage is taxed, and those specific buildings, starting the land and the improvements on that land are exempt at this time. Outside, yeah, outside that 11.87, it, it, it's where the movie theater was or is, it's where the buses are stored, and other, the midway, for example, during the fair, which is clearly not agriculture, that is taxed, and is not part of the exempted area. The fiscal '22 real estate taxes, at the fair total of 76, 564, includes all the properties that's under their control, and that mounts the sixth highest taxpayer in the town for '22. Going forward, the assessor and I have discussed doing another full reassessment of the property, including the exempt proportions, to determine if they're still being used as the way that it was determined in 2003, and see what other modifications, if any, need to be considered. But there is, if you go onto the board docs, again, there's, there's some interesting information on that. You can see the full list on page two, one of the attachments, the Topsfield Fairgrounds buildings, and it lists specifically the buildings, like the Public Safety Building, Sportsman Building, Train on Stage, the Flower Building, Poultry Building, Fruit and Vegetable Building, Maintenance Building, or Area, I should say, Rabbit Barn, Pig Barn, Cattle Barn, Clubhouse, Horse Stabling, Sinks and Hand Wash Stations, Sheep Barn, 848 Building, Beekeeping, Administrative Building, Information Booth, and the First Aid are all exempted buildings and the land underneath as well. And that leaves the Coolidge Hall, Fair Trade Center, the Arena, the Garage Building, the ATM, the paving and the sign are taxed. They are not, they are not part of the exempted areas. So I just wanted, again, knowing that we have the, in a couple of weeks, we have that continuation, and this might be something that I know I'm hearing about that might come up during the meeting, I wanted to make sure the board had a general sense of how it, how it currently is happening. And I'm sure many of you might already know this, but I did want to make sure I provided this updated information to everybody and answer any questions you might have.
So I will ask one of the questions that I have been asked a lot in the last two years, which is, what is the, and I don't know if there's a simple answer to it, but what's the tax impact of something like the drive-in? Because I presume the business arrangement is that the, the, you know, the fairgrounds is whatever, renting the land to the company that runs the fair, the drive-in, or how does, how does that work?
So we're fully taxing that, just like any commercial property or residential property for that matter. The land on it is being taxed. The additional benefit is the meals tax, because they do have a concession area that they, they do sell food at. So we do see some, some funds, and a tax benefit that comes back from that portion of it. But they were already being taxed in a way that would not prevent them from doing that. And so the, it's similar, that areas where they used to park the buses, for example, or they do park the buses and the indoor soccer and the use of that, the arena, those are all items that are taxed and not, they're not, not exempt. Probably not the right way to say it, but.
Kevin, you said you might be going, go ahead, go ahead, Dick.
It's just that the, the taxed property, as you point out, they're not exempt properties as the parking fields are not agricultural. You can't grow something on top of macadam very well. So those things are taxed, and when you do something on them, that doesn't change the tax that you do on them. In this particular case, whether it's a drive-in, or it's parking of buses, or it's parking of cars for the fairgrounds, it's the same tax. But as you also point out, the delta is something in the sense of a meal tax for people who bought some things during the drive-in.
That's correct. And I would say too, if they put the movie theater at the Train on Stage, or at the First Aid Building, or that was their movie theater, that would change the status of that building, as an example, from being exempt in law likelihood. You'd have to go through the Board of Assessors to make that determination, but that's sort of the threshold of how they're using that space. If it's for agricultural purposes, if it's for commercial purposes, outside of agriculture, movie theater, that might change the, the existing. But the location within that map, if it's outside the blue squares, movie theater is allowed and would not change any of their existing tax status, because they're already being taxed.
Yeah, I think your point is well taken, that it is the assessor's responsibility to, to do that sort of thing, to evaluate it.
That is correct. And, and, and Tula and I have talked when we went through this, about maybe it is time to, to look at a third party to come in and update everything. It might, if the work, a lot of the work's already been done with the initial assessment in 2003, but we're coming up on 18 years, 19 years since that was performed, and there's a real possibility that certain things have been added or changed, maybe that hasn't, but it's probably worth it this, this time, a look at it. So that's a conversation she'll have to have with the Board of Assessors to see if that's the next step, if that's appropriate, but that was a conversation that we did have.
Kevin, with the adoption or potential adoption of 11 multi-day or liquor license for the fairgrounds, and there's some of those buildings you named, does that put us in a different category? Does, does some of that land use shift, that 11 acres shift, if now we have something that's, has alcohol attached to it?
So the Coolidge Building's already, and the, the, the land and the improvements on it, the building itself at Coolidge, which is where the application is for, for the permanent, would not change, because it's already being taxed. The 11 one-days, I, when, as it's during the fair, I don't believe that would have an impact, and Tula did not indicate that she thought that the applications as presented would have an impact on, say, that area that they're looking to have the beer tent, per se. But I, that's something we can, I'm sure they'll be looking hard at the Board of Assessors well, on the impact of that, but it wasn't something when we spoke that she's, she was concerned that would necessarily change the tax, the exemption status of it.
Got you. And, and just, I, I think it's obvious, but it's a work session, so I'm going to ask anyway. You have a list of the 10 largest taxpayers and say, as nature of business, cooperative utility, residential utility, et cetera. You're doing that more for descriptive reasons, since, since, you know, the business doesn't impact the actual tax rate, correct?
The, the, right. So the, we're looking at the land and the improvements on the land. So the number one taxpayer in town is.
Great Hill.
It's a, it's a, it's a housing development, and it has significant improvements on it. And so you see the, the tax rate as a result of that is significant. That's, that's what it drives, it is the value based on, you know, how many bedrooms, how many square feet do you have, and that per unit, how many units, and ultimately with the sales.
Cool. I totally understand. Thank you.
Welcome.
Are there any other questions on this? Boyd, are you covering the entire check for Great Hill? Is that, is that all on you?
Well, it's, it's a stretch, but I try.
And thank you.
The town of Topsfield thanks you, Boyd. All right, well, if we have nothing else on that, we'll move forward to the next item on the agenda, the recently passed, much discussed zoning requirement regarding MBTA and MBTA-adjacent communities. I assume, Kevin, you're also ready to tackle this one?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And I'd also recognize Martha Morrison, Chair of the Planning Board, I believe is on the call as well. We talked prior to this meeting, and I'm going to give a roundup of it and answer questions, but Ms. Morrison's also willing to provide any additional feedback if, if needed. So I will just give kind of a bulleted, step-by-step of what's happening with the MBTA multifamily zoning. As everyone's aware, recently, the State Department of Housing and Economic Development promulgated new regulations related to a law passed last year at the State House related to by right zoning requirements in local towns and cities. Take a few minutes to update the board on what the requirements as presented, potential impacts, options, and next steps going forward. We'll say that this is their, their, this is not a final version, this is their proposed version, draft version of guidelines, with the final coming sometime after the end of March, when the public comment period ends. So they'll take the comments, hopefully, and adjust, if anything, that they feel is appropriate, final version.
Maybe, maybe they'll take, maybe they'll take the comments.
Hopefully. I know there's a lot of communities that are very, very aware and working through their processes, because they know that it, it could have the potential to be very impactful. So January 2021, Governor Baker signed into law Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. The law requires MBTA communities to create as by right multifamily high-density zoning districts within the, or district within the community. Communities that fail to comply will not be eligible for significant grant opportunities. Some of those in Topsfield amounted over $500,000 that we received competitively last year. So when, if we do not, hypothetically speaking, if this was something that was required prior to this year, and we did not adopt it locally, those half a million dollars in funds we received would not have been items that we could have been eligible to receive. For the purposes of what Topsfield and how we're involved, because we, we don't have a bus station, we don't have a subway, we don't have a ferry, we don't have a train, we don't have an airport. The, the reason we're included in this is because after the state passed that law, they sent it to Housing and Economic Development to put together the specifics associated with it, and the law itself is, is embedded in the presentation on board docs, and that is simply it. That's all the state passed. The guidelines are going to be, are a lot more prescriptive. But one of the things they did is they defined this requirement to not only be for communities that have a ferry, an airport, a subway, a bus, or a train, rail. Adjacent communities to those communities were also required to meet the standard, the same as those communities that have those services within them. So Topsfield, along with 176 other communities in eastern Massachusetts, or, I'm sorry, 175 communities in eastern Massachusetts, basically east of Worcester, are affected by that. And there's a map in the slide deck that shows that the green communities are affected, and as anyone who's looked at it can see, it's pretty much everybody except the Cape Cod in Boston. Boston's exempt, not because they don't have public transportation, but because they have a different dynamic, I guess, at play in, in Boston than the suburbs typically do. And so Topsfield is one of 75 communities that are adjacent, that amounts to 73% of those affected by this regulation are not, do not have public access to transportation within those communities. So there's a lot of similar sized communities, a lot of similar communities that do not have a transit-oriented development location around a train station, per se, or subway station, that are, that are looking at this. The, the guidelines as presented in December, when they, they came out, required gross density of, of the district that we create to have 15 units per acre with a minimum of 50 acres in the zone, equates the minimum of 750 units of housing being required. And that's not prorated based on size of the community for existing homes, or by the size of the geographical locations of the community. It's a flat 750, so one-size-fits-all approach to it. This obviously could have significant infrastructure, water, roadways, public services impacts, the schools and public safety. And then there's obviously the consideration around conservation and septic limitations in a community like Topsfield. So those, that being said, the state has emphasized, I've had a call with the Secretary, Secretary Kenealy, myself, to talk about this and a few other items with him. I've had, sat through two presentations, and I've had a lot of conversations with Martha Morrison and other communities, as well as our state delegation. But the emphasis from the state at this point is that the multi, the multifamily requirement does not necessarily require housing production. So they're not looking for us to actually have 750 units built at any point, really, or in the next five years, 10 years, 15 years. It wants to allow that opportunity to exist. So in essence, if we create the district and somebody decides to build 100 or 200 apartments or condos, that would still satisfy, as long as the district allows for up to 750. So some of those limitations, conservation, infrastructure, septic, could play into some limitations with what we're, what we're required to do, what actual projects might come out of the ground from it. So next steps, the, like I mentioned, the public comment period ends March 31. There's a, at that time, some point thereafter, the final guidelines will be published. Right now, they're saying that adjacent communities will not have to comply until 2024 with accepting and adopting the zone, and will like mention that it would have to pass the town meeting in order to make the zoning change. So if we create the zone, it would have to go in front of the community and the people to make a vote if it's something that the community wants. But what can we do and what are we doing, I guess, is the next question. And so, like I mentioned earlier, the Planning Board Chair, Martha Morrison, I have spoken probably a half a dozen times, if not more, on this exact subject matter. We've provided our inputs to each other, the impacts. I know that she's working with other members of the community to sort of understand the whole of it and some of the potential limitations. But right now, Ms. Morrison and I talked about having a small working group put together, herself, myself, Donna Rich likely, Bob Moriarty potentially, and maybe some others to discuss, and really strategize and organize, understand the impacts. We know generally what they might look like, but really put numbers, data behind it. And then as we work through that with a target of the end of March, be able to hopefully put something together that, that is a statement from the community, Topsfield, on what we feel it might be more appropriate and what the impacts as presented might be, positive or negative. But I've also, like I mentioned earlier, I've spoke with both our state rep and our state senator on this, so they understand the concerns. I've also had a number of conversations with other town administrators in communities on the North Shore and Cape Ann. And there's the thought of possibly, in addition to a local comment being submitted for, to the state, a possible regional one from like-sized communities facing similar challenges that can show, in essence, strength in numbers, right, of what, this isn't just a Topsfield issue, but it's a regional issue, and what the impacts might look like. And so I'll also mention too, something this, this impactful is very, very transformative if it were to pass in something of that type of scale where it happened in Topsfield. We can all admit that. It's going to be a transformative, very transformative for the community. We've, we've talked about this as well, but I'll mention again, the, the planner position. This is where I do see that additional professional support here in Town Hall could really help over the next year and a half, really guiding us on what's possible, working with other communities and making it a priority, so that when we land on what we land, it can be done in a very professional, thoughtful way. Because whatever we do, if we do something, it will be, this is legacy, right? It's, it's going to last for a very long time and have some major impacts on, on the community and really our, our identity. So I mentioned that as well, and then that's, that, those are really the most important things, but the most important thing I want the board to know is that. that's that, those are really the most important things, but the most important thing I want the board to know is that what the basics, basic premise of this is, where we are and what we're already doing and what we plan to do moving forward. To ensure during the next two months, we can get some good data, communicate with the people who are going to be affected and the people who are closest to it um from the boards and commissions and the and Town Hall, and work with other communities and our state delegation to really pull together something that we could hopefully find support with the select board with and provide to the um to the state our feedback that hopefully they'll consider incorporate with any final uh decision that's made. With that, I will open this up for any questions um that anyone might have.
Um I I I have not gone through this entire document yet. Uh and I can see that it, I hope that it's based on a regional kind of thing as you recall, as you mentioned. But I would, I I'm wondering if these people are so naive to think that a town of Topsfield or a town like Topsfield could put together a fifty acre thing set aside to to build seven hundred and fifty housing units. And that's absolutely ludicrous. So it has to be regional, in my opinion, and I hope that's what I find out by reading this whole document.
Subvoid by regional? What do you mean by regional? Do you mean uh the Merrimack Valley or do you mean?
Well, we have, somebody's got to define that region, okay? I don't know what it could be, but I could see where they could put together a a group of towns uh of a like uh population, of a like situation and say, now you people might want to come up with some way to do this, okay? But for to think that each individual town is going to come up something, that's so naive, I can't even believe it.
Uh if I might um add some information here, um because we have already started looking at this. Uh the Planning Board reviewed the uh guidelines uh and universally believed that they were impossible. So if I can possibly share with you, and I'm going to switch to my um document. It is really not feasible in a septic community to put fifteen units, parking, a circulation road, septic and reserve septic areas adequate for fifteen units of two to three bedroom housing units, because remember, this has to be family housing. Um it has to accommodate families and that an acre of land uh that is in a septic community cannot really support such a requirement unless you go up, what, seven stories or something? I mean, I guess you can stack it up. But a bottom line is that under our normal um regulations that you just can't do fifteen units per acre. So that's the bottom line for us to consider. The second thing is that seven hundred and fifty units equals thirty two percent of Topsfield's housing stock. So increasing our housing stock by thirty two percent would put a huge strain on public services. Uh and this is, remember, it's all family housing. So we're talking about an impact on the schools, um impact on public services of all sorts, and that we already know that tax revenues for such properties uh cannot support the offset of the cost of services. A a really interesting point is that we've seen time and time again that various elements of the state do not talk to each other. Uh that uh the demand for water from seven hundred and fifty units would exceed our withdrawal permit by about forty eight percent. So how are we supposed to support water, you know, for all of these units? So these, these are some initial um numbers that we have uh relative to the impact, the the actual real impact on the infrastructure of Topsfield. Now, I will not go off on my usual rant about home rule versus state government. Uh I'll save that for later. Uh but this is a true overreach on the part of the state. We are not required to do this. We are required to do it only if we want access to various grant programs that are designed to help produce housing. So the idea that they cut us off from anything that we might access to produce housing, just because we can't do physically what they want is counterintuitive. I mean, it's a typical state, you know, kind of option. Now, all of this was put together uh under the aegis of the legislation uh passed by the state that was very by the the legislature and signed by the governor. And that was all very vague. All of this got put into the hands of Housing and Economic Development uh and the MBTA uh who produced these guidelines. Now, I I I am willing to defend Topsfield to the end, you know, of time. But just think about poor Wenham that has half of our demographic and they still have to produce seven hundred and fifty units. That that the entire thing is 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 ridiculous. I mean, it makes no sense. Um and so I agree with Kevin. I know he's talked with various town administrators. Uh that this is the entire eastern part of Massachusetts, a great part of which is on septic. And all of these communities are in the same situation that we are and that we simply need to um express our own concerns as well as band with many, many other communities who surely have the same concerns. I mean, I also question, uh you know, uh forty A, which is the zoning um the zoning statute, uh specifically assigns zoning to local communities. I don't know what right the state has to start mandating zoning regulations in local communities. I mean, I I have serious question about the entire background of this and the legitimacy of the entire thing, but that's just me. Uh I just point out that the impact on Topsfield would be catastrophic if we were to pass this. Now, it is the case that you can create a district uh but and say, oh yeah, we've got fifty acres, you know, and here you can put your things. But the problem is that the guidelines say that you have to prove that within that district, you can create seven hundred and fifty units. I mean, that's the guidelines are very clear about that. And that this means a kind of lot by lot assessment. And it specifically says, you know, if anything is under conservation or if there are septic problems or there's something you can't include those properties within the district that you approve. Now, I don't know who was supposed to do this, and I don't know where we could find fifty, and they have to be contiguous acres in which you could produce this amount of construction. Uh I I mean, this is an impossible task in the town of Topsfield. And that's my basic position.
Yeah, and Martha, that was going to be my question, not that, you know, we're going to get into the, you know, specifics of where we we would put this, but is there, I mean, does there exist a a plot of land that given all of the restrictions and what we would have to do, where we could even zone this and be within the rules?
No, I, my position is no. I that, you know, we've looked at it, the Planning Board uh started in on this as soon as we knew about it. And that, you know, basically, if you create a district um and you say, oh, okay, we'll find fifty acres um that you then open up possibilities that someone comes in and buys a house on an acre, tears it down and builds a fifteen unit per acre skyscraper, you know, in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Is this what we want for our town?
Kevin, you were about to say something?
Yeah, no, I think it's um there's a lot of work that still needs to go into, right? So um I mentioned it before, this is exactly why, you know, this Morrison and I are advocating for the the planner to help us with something just like this. There's not a better time to have that support so that we can take a deep dive into those. We've got great volunteers who are working on it right now. But somebody who can help centralize and and help with the um those efforts in such a critical time with such a critical um new requirement is going to be important. And I think that until we do a full deep dive, I think this Morrison's absolutely correct, that's going to be incredibly difficult to identify a a place that would meet every piece of the criteria. But when I talked with Secretary Kenealy, the impression I received was it's mostly checking the box, that there is, whether actually they I, they're not expecting us to provide them with um wetland setbacks in a project or the detail that would come with somebody who does come forward. They're looking for fifty acres that um could suffice based on their their criteria. So whether that exists or not, I'd say it's to be determined. I I wouldn't want to say just no, but I think that it's going to be a community like Topsfield, it's going to be a much harder to find an area that could satisfy every piece of the requirements from the state. But we'll, we'll know more as we go through this process. We have two years to get there.
Excuse me, Kevin, with all due respect. Um we know the town of Topsfield, we are familiar with literally every single lot in the town. We've been at this for over twenty odd years, and I can tell you right now, we don't need a planner to tell us that we can't do this. And I'm sorry to say that. I fully endorse, you know, all of the rest of the issues about the planner. But this is not a matter for a planner, that we are totally familiar with what is there, and I have read the guidelines. And they say you have to demonstrate that the lots that you have included can meet the requirement. Now, we can't do that. What do you do? Say the entire town and then let people pick and choose and, you know, snap off you know, various lots here and there, but you cannot, the bottom line here is that on one acre you cannot put fifteen units plus a septic system, plus a reserve system, plus parking lot, you know, parking spaces, plus circulation roads unless you build very high up. And I don't know.
Ms Morrison, I would say respectfully in response that no one's advocating for that, or no one's saying that that's possible. But I know that the state's looking for data-driven information, and I think they're just looking for the response from us. And it's hard for me to say definitively to the question posed by Mr. Hook, that it's a nonstarter, that there's absolutely no we can't pass anything without actually looking at it. I know it's going to be a challenge, I don't disagree with you. But I know it's going to be a lot, a lot of people to try to make that happen. So when I mention the planner, it is real that most communities have planners and they will be leveraging that fully on something like this.
I'm more than willing to agree that most people have planners. Bob and I have no problem with a planner, uh that that's fine. But I'm telling you that with the MBTA situation, the fact of the matter is that it is a nonstarter because of the density and that it doesn't work in septic communities. And that this is something that we know. And I've already provided you with a few data points that uh we have already worked out. Uh we can do more, but this whole proposition is something that is antithetical to anything that the town of Topsfield or Wenham, Georgetown. Uh I mean, you name them, all of these communities, West Newbury, all of these so-called adjacent communities that are being um uh you know, held hostage over grant money to try and produce something that is essentially not possible. And that that is the bottom line. I I agree with their principles, they want more housing. But please, you know, let's not impose upon communities that rely on septic services are rural communities that cannot accommodate this kind of stuff. Um and so that's what we need to respond to. And Kevin, you and I have already talked. We will provide all of the data, all of the information. Uh we've been collecting it since this thing, you know, materialized. Uh and that hopefully our response will include uh the fact that this is simply not a possibility in the town of Topsfield. And then we should join with the other communities to um uh point out the same for them. You know, for all of us.
All right. I don't think we're going to solve this tonight.
Martha, excuse me, Marshall, just a second. Martha, I appreciate your input. You've done a great job. And you will provide us with the kind of data that we need and you've already done that tonight. But I think this is a, this is a joke, and I think that if we're only trying to preserve grant money, now let's move on. Uh Marshall, you're about to go where I'm saying, let's move on and put this behind us, but but continue to study it because these people will try to do what they want to do.
And I think ultimately that was going to be my point is, we can say to the state all we want, this doesn't work here. I don't know if the state's going to care that we say that. And so that might be precisely where the planner comes into this, because the planner is going to be able to speak state better than we can. I don't know. But to everyone's point, this is two years away. Um but we can't just say no to the state. I mean, we can if we want to wish our grant money bu- goodbye, but uh I don't think it's as easy as just saying, no, we can't do this.
Well, you you're actually, we we've got to be very careful, we've got to be vigilant. But I can tell you that mass housing could have cared less about our issue at fifty seven Perkins Road. And they were valid issues and mass housing could have cared less, and this organization feels this is going to be the same way, in my opinion.
And I would just this is just that, I think we're all saying the same thing. This is incredibly impactful. And we're going to spend some real time on this to get it right. And that this community, there's an identity in this community that we that people come here for. There's a, there's, there's, there's a lot to that, and that is one of the most important afterlife safety that we preserve is what we have as a community. So we're working hard to try to figure out all the pieces of this, and it's so early that it's hard to say definitively anything other than we're working on it. And we're going to do our best to protect this community's best interests.
I would like to make, I would like to make one further comment. Um and I I typically am not um, you know, oppositional about things, as you all know. Uh but yeah, we can create a district, you know, we can say, all right, you know, here's a district. Um I don't know to what extent we'd have to prove it. But if we create a district in which we know that this can't happen as a result of zoning requirements, if we put on the various conditions that we would want in terms of height restrictions and, you know, affordability. And by the way, there's no affordability requirement in this thing at all, uh which is very surprising to me. That we can do that, uh but I have always taken the position over more than twenty years in dealing with zoning uh that you don't create zoning when you know that it can't be met. That that people who are trying to do something come in and say, oh, I'm going to want to, I want to do this thing on this piece of property because you said it's by right. And then when they get to, you know, whatever, there's no special permit required for this. But they get to the building inspector who says, I'm sorry, you don't meet this. And then they end up at the zoning board of the fields looking for variances and looking for some kind of relief. And that there is a serious issue about creating zoning that you know, in your heart of hearts cannot be met, that anyone trying to use it. And so I I I think it's not correct. I think we have to be very careful about this. Uh and that um I I mean, I initially, I was not concerned about creating some kind of modest district for multifamily housing um that we could do. We could do it somewhere on Route One, you know, we could have done it, we were already thinking about this. But now, I mean, for seven hundred and fifty units, there's no way. And the density requirements are not something that we or any other septic community could meet.
Mister uh Anter Brown, did you have uh one, something to to wrap this up?
Of an exceedingly long process. We're not going to answer it all tonight. We don't even completely know what we're talking about tonight. So yes.
That was my question, Marshall. My question was, what's the action next step item on this that we have to be thinking about and prepping for for, you know, Kevin, Martha at all?
To provide our, March thirty first to provide our
March thirty first.
About what the the draft rules say. That's what our, that's what our job is.
And Dick, that's in the PowerPoint I saw, nineteen page PowerPoint that that's somewhere in there that I skimmed over. Okay, thanks.
The timetable is by the end of March, we have to submit our comments. Uh by some point in June, the town has to By some point in June, the town has to register itself if we are planning to move forward with something like this. And you have to sign up with the state and provide all of the information about who to contact and what to do. You then have to produce a plan as to how you're going to create the district in accordance with their rules and regulations. So it's, it is a long process. I'm just cautioning us that it's, it's really critical that we look at our town and we look at what Topsfield is and say, are we really willing to go forward with trying to create some kind of, you know, obscenity district that could radically alter our community when in fact we know that physically all of this is really not possible in the town of Topsfield. And so I'm very concerned about being open and honest that, and making it clear to the state that what they have required of us is something, or they're not even requiring it. They say you have to do it if you want these grants, that you, that, you know, we need to be clear that their, their requirements are things that we truly cannot meet physically. It's not even whether we want to do it, you know, it's that, you know, you can't do it physically. And so how right is it for us to say, oh yeah, we're going to try and look at this. Oh yeah, we're going to try and do it. Well, we know at the outset that, that this is not physically possible.
What I would say is that there's a process and what we're talking about is going through the process, you know? And again, I say this with all the respect in the world as a guy who hasn't lived here nearly as long as anyone on this call, but we can't just go back to the state and say, here's our conclusion. We have to go through the process to get to that conclusion. I don't think there's anyone, not only in this call, I don't think there's anyone in this town who wants to create a district the likes of which both you're talking about and maybe the state imagines, but I don't think we can just say no. And so how do we get from where we are right now, knowing what we think we know and getting to a place where we can move forward with that?
Well, anyone can produce a district and they can take it to town meeting that say...
That's not what we're doing, so.
Well, we're not and we need to express our serious reservations to the state as to the feasibility of this whole thing.
Which is again precisely what we plan to do.
Yeah, and we need to join with other similar communities to express our, you know, larger concerns, you know, of all of these communities. These are not legislative rules. These are put together by housing and community development and I expect that they had urban areas more in mind and perhaps never really considered what the impact would be on, you know, communities that are on septic. But anyway, I'm more than happy, the planning board is more than happy to collect all of the information, as you see, we've already done so for a number of these things and we'll provide to Kevin and to the board our concerns and our objections, but I will tell you that the planning board was universally distraught by this, seeing all of the problems with it.
I think we all are. Mr. Gant?
Thank you.
Have anything?
There was one legislative thing that the state did do and that is to reduce the required vote for a change in zoning to 50% for some of this kind of zoning. So that's a legislative act that they've done. Essentially the remainder of this, this idea of the requirement to do this or that is not a requirement that we say even yes or no to. We don't need to say no to the state. The issue is, do you go forward and try to essentially meet the requirements in order to be valid or acceptable to get certain grants? This is not all the grants from the state. It's as Martha said, grants that relate to development and housing. That's the area. So essentially, I believe that we should do something. We need to go back and explain to the state why what they have asked to be done in the town of Topsfield does not match. And if we can do it with other towns, I think that's a great idea. But we don't need to do that. I think it's the right thing to do to help the state not be too foolish with us about it, but we actually don't have to do anything. As long, but we also understand if we don't do something, we will not be eligible for those grants.
Those grants which we've already brought.
Go ahead.
No, I'm just saying that we are already receiving money from those grants and have in the past, so.
But, but, but that may not be worth, they may not be worth the effort or the dollars associated with it. And that's why one of the concerns that I have was the comment that says, we're going to spend real time to get this right. Now, I'm concerned about how much real time we spend. I know Martha and the planning board has spent a good bit of time on it, but we need to be careful that we stick, we do the things that we need to do as a town, running the town, before we go running after things that we essentially know we can't meet. But I think we, I agree that we should go back to the state with our comments and I appreciate Martha's efforts in that regard, but we should not, we should be very careful as about spending real time on getting it quote, "right." We have, we're going to do it as efficiently as we can back to the state.
We've, we've already spent enough time tonight.
Well, we spent enough time tonight because we have to get to the next thing and we have, Kevin and I have sustainability at seven o'clock, so we do have a bit of a...
I'd like to make, I'd like to make one comment, Marshall, if I might. I think this thing is so ludicrous that they're going to get such an upheaval from these communities that I think that you're going to see a lot of changes in what they'd like to do.
That would be ideal, but right now we're at the beginning of it.
We don't, we don't know that yet.
I, I agree with Boyd. I expect that many communities are going to respond as certainly the planning board here has and that there will, there should be changes that will occur. And so that's why we need to do the full court press, so to speak, in terms of our concerns and our objections. Now, just so you know, no one on the planning board has any objection to increasing housing stock. We had already started looking, you know, knowing that this was coming along as to where we could create a district that would be able to accommodate multifamily housing and that we already had some ideas, but when we were, the number 750 was dropped on us. It was like, you know, excuse me, that's the entire town.
We can keep going on about this all, all night long and I, and I apologize for that. But I told mass housing that the town of Topsfield, when we were talking about 57 Perkins Road, I said, I told mass housing that the town of Topsfield doesn't have a problem with 40B developments. It's just that this isn't the place to do it.
Yep. All right. Thank you, Arthur, for coming tonight to this part of it. It's a good thing and again, I would just reiterate, we're at the start of a long process here.
Yeah, if I could just make one final comment. Boyd, I'm glad you said that to mass housing, but mass housing is not involved in this particular thing. Mass housing is involved in 40Bs. This thing does not have a 40B component and it is not reliant on mass housing, it's housing and community and economic development. So they're two different entities that are involved in this. And so mass housing has its own issues and, you know, 40B and so on, and we work with them when we can, but this is a different creature altogether and it's coming out of a different part of the state.
Well, I understand and I appreciate that clarification, but I know they're two different organizations.
Right, okay. Well, listen, thank you all for listening to me. Sorry, I came on too strong, but we've already started this, we've already been looking at it and we're happy to provide to you a list of concerns that we have about all of this. Okay, so thanks, guys.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha, very much.
Town administrator Kevin Hartuny and 2022 town warrant preliminary list.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. So as in line with our schedule for the budget capital warrant, we're working on the version one draft that we hope to distribute early next week. And so to get the ball rolling and so we can prioritize where we're spending our time on preparation, what we have on board docs right now for your review is the preliminary list of warrant articles. Just so, process-wise, it had a preliminary kickoff with KP Law. We strategized and planned out how we're going to work hand in glove through the process of drafting the warrant like we've done the last two years and we're set up pretty well to move forward. Within the warrant, the list, first articles, one through 13 are the standard warrant articles that we see pretty much every year. And the articles are, for the most part, already written, some tweaks will be made in the version one documents distributed. Articles 14 through 25 is our capital request. That's been now put into the warrant or will be put into the warrant. I've highlighted in orange, number 15, I've only done that because depending on the free cash, depending on conversations with the FinCom, that we initially estimated through a funding mechanism of STM, but that might be at a future date to determine that it should be, instead of a transfer, possibly a free cash allocation. But that's up, that's orange just as to be noted, nothing more at this time than that. Articles 26 through 32 are possible items which we're considering taking out of the operating budget potentially and making one-time articles to fund these through free cash. Again, with our free cash number, we have some opportunities to bring down the operating budget through the next cycle of, of the budget process, especially knowing the wave of Masco is going to hit us pretty soon, knowing that we could pivot some of those articles, some of those increases in the budget, potentially warrant articles as, as a way to find the funding and keep our budget in a, in a good place. Also, what we have is articles 33 and 34, there's some technical tweaks to the agreement between Masco and the three communities, Middleton Boxer and Topsfield. One is a typographical error and another one is a DESI required language, small modification in the language. Article 35, I believe we have one planning article on its way from the planning board, which will incorporate. And then article 36, we have some old school debt that we'll look to retire as well. And then the final four articles are again, are sort of our standard ones that we have. Typically, we have an OPEB contribution, capital stabilization fund, a general stabilization fund, and then a free cash to offset the tax rate if appropriate. And then, so those are the, the list and any feedback, conversation, more detail I could provide within that this time. Absolutely welcome to the questions and comments. If, and I'd also mention though, before we get into that, that I did have a conversation with Chief Hovey and our clerk, Beth Willis, around town meeting this year and what we might consider doing for dates and location. We still have very high numbers relative to COVID and so we talked about, do we replicate what we did last year without, at the common, doing a tent? We got tremendous positive feedback from last year and we do have a funding mechanism now with the ARPA funds if we choose to use them to help us with the cost of a tent if we feel it's going to help us with preventing the spread of COVID. I do know people are still very cautious of going indoors and gathering. We want to make sure the event is open and available to as many people in town as possible that want to participate. So we'll continue on those conversations as well. But for tonight's purposes, again, I wanted to just provide the preliminary list and any feedback, questions, thoughts, more than welcome.
The amendment to the regional district agreement. Last year, we had made a recommendation that we add in requirement for the schools to send us the residents of Topsfield, which represent the, for each community, the residents of Topsfield that represent students in the, in that particular October 1st audit, so to speak. I'm disappointed that I don't see that as one of their amendments. They said they didn't have, it was too late to put it in there last time. Apparently they've had a year and I don't see it here. So it's a little disappointing that they, maybe they addressed it, but I should, I should see it. There was a question about security and the way it was written originally from us was that it went to the town clerk. Town clerk handles all sorts of material that's controlled and sensitive and confidential as far as populations, et cetera, et cetera. So town clerk, it seems to me that that was a red herring one. At any rate, I'd like to see that come back. The downtown beautification, landfill, tree removal, all of these are relatively new ones to me. They, they haven't been the sorts of things that have been brought to the surface before. Will we get more detail about what these things are because theoretically, we're going to be looking at these warrant articles as to whether we want to put them on or not. Do you understand that they're new to us?
Absolutely, Mr. Gant. So yes.
Good, okay. So then I realized that you realize that you're going to be providing some information as to what they represent and why and how they differ from whatever we have before, et cetera?
Yeah, and I could talk briefly on it at my level right now if you'd like, because there's only a handful, I think, that we're referring to. So again, just as we look at the operating budget and some of the requests that have come in from the departments and kind of after my last two experiences, knowing the third, this being the third year, we're going to have to look really hard in, in what those asks look like and not all of them will get moved forward through the FinCom process. But there's still certain needs and because there's a free cash that hasn't been certified yet, but our projections are, are positive, there, there's a healthy number out there. The thought would be to, rather than incorporating these into the operating budget, that we look for a one-time funding so that we can use that as a resource going forward as needed. So it's not necessarily in one fiscal year, we could use it in two or three or four or five years as needed. The downtown beautification specifically, we spent $10,000 this past year in different items from hay bales on the downtown to the flowers and the plants, on the lights, I should say, to reimbursements for the planters that the garden club and Martha Morrison did. We had so many volunteers come together to help us with those items and they made a difference. We heard such positive feedback. My, my reason for including this is that we've historically relied on either volunteers or donations and Tomato Festival is another example, the HOG and things like that where there's real costs that can come back to the town. There hasn't been a place in the budget to actually support the volunteers or pay someone back directly for expense that they have that benefits the community as a whole. And so the thought was having a line item that allows us to do that potentially going forward in the operating budget. And so this would supplement the operating budget if it's something we wanted to move forward, but it is an ask. It's new, as you said, Mr. Gant, and it's up for discussion if it's something we want to include moving forward as well as with the FinCom. But it's also going to be part of the budget conversation because these items are all in the budget currently as well. The second one's the landfill.
Kind of question as to what represents an ongoing cost and what represents a one-time cost. The way you described it, it essentially is a one-time cost, excuse me, an operating cost, because I don't see something that we would do. So I think that's worthy of some discussion as we go forward, but go ahead.
Certainly. Yeah, I know, absolutely. And I think here's a better example, maybe the landfill improvement one. That is something that's included in the budget. What it represents is that we are consultant, our new consultant, we, we all know, we went from Weston Sampson to a new consulting firm that's helping us with the ongoing testing. When he was out there, he identified a number of issues with the existing infrastructure. Nothing that's dire or immediate, but over time, after 30 years of different pieces of equipment wearing and having used, some of them might need to have some upkeep or replacement. So what we're looking at in the budget was, which was proposed by Wendy Hansberry, our health director, and Gary Wilds, our highway superintendent, was a $10,000 line item that would go into the operating budget. Further conversations that we've had, there's a likelihood that this is something that will not necessarily happen every year, but could happen and have a significant cost when it does happen. So to have monies aside for those one-time costs when they come up was the, was the thought process behind that one. Tree removal and plantings. We had a conversation, Mr. Gant, actually you pointed out that, you know, comprehensive look at the dying and the trees at the end of their useful life and having a plan to, in order to address those and how we go about doing that in a month, a conversation we had months ago. The idea here is each year we've, we have just... The idea here is each year we've, we have just, just over $7,000 annually for tree removal for the whole year for everything. Each year, last year, we've asked for additional funding, $3,000 to get us to $10,000. The idea here is if we can set aside a certain amount of money, we can draw down on that in a comprehensive way. So we can come up with a strategy of where the most concerning trees are. Because there's trees out there right now, and I've talked to constituents on this, I've talked with David Bond, our tree warden. There's trees out there that probably could come down if we had the funding to allow us to do that. Because they might be towards the end of their useful life. So this would allow us to get ahead of that. While also recognizing the, the ongoing cost of building it into the, into the budget could be problematic.
Because it is an ongoing cost, unfortunately. I think my, my, my representation here was that the town has changed some in that it has matured from one of a farming community with open fields to a forested area. And that now those forests, so it's something that we have as an ongoing cost. It's not like we're going to chop them all down and, and start planting fields again. So it does feel like an ongoing cost to me.
It, it could be, yes. And I can see that, I think what the plan would be is if we have a one-time funding, we would come up with a comprehensive plan because there's a number of trees we know and we've identified. And we can't address them on an ongoing basis because the capacity and the budget doesn't allow us to take care of those.
That's where, this is where we should be making a request for the budget to explain how the town has changed and that we go to the FinCom and ask for the addition. Okay, I got the point. Thank you.
And then the ballfields and the, and the parks, this was an ask in the operating budget from Superintendent Wilds. The thought is, we, we found, we had an article for improvements at the, at Clock Park, or Pie Brook, my apologies, Pie Brook, that was about eight years, 10 years old. You know, we used to draw down on some of those monies to help make some improvements on there. And it was $100,000 set aside in a warrant article eight to 10 years ago. There was a little bit of money left, we used that, we exhausted that account to allow us to do some improvements up there at the field. The thought here is to do something similar where we create an account that we can use to chip away at these fields. It won't be ongoing, it's going to, it will allow us to get a big burst of improvements on the ballfields and some of the parks. And then we could just continue maintaining like we would otherwise. But there's, there's some of the fields have fallen behind and they, there's, there's some significant work that could be done to really improve the playing surfaces and safety associated with those playing surfaces for those who participate in TAA. And I mentioned earlier, the revenue increase, we need to deliver a service in return that, that's improved from year over year, if we're going to ask for more funds to come back to the town. And this is hopefully a mechanism to allow us to do that by getting a big push in that first year and then having fields that are brought up to a certain level that we then maintain. It certainly could be a reoccurring cost, but doing it with a one-time cost, we can do multiple fields one time and then not have any additional costs associated with it other than what we typically would do to maintain fields.
Disappointed to hear this idea of maintaining the landfill and that, that budget that had, not a budget, the, the warrant articles that created the money to maintain the landfill, apparently we've dried up already. That was, that $100,000 was there to take care of the landfill as it began to disintegrate underneath and therefore the soil level would change on the surface of the fields. That's what that was primarily there for, to maintain the field so that they were relatively level when at times the stuff underneath it decayed. So it's disappointing that $100,000 is gone, but okay, maybe it's, it needs to be replenished now. I got the point.
Yeah, it's what we had last year, when we used the funds. So there were some real safety issues that were identified by TAA and our parks and cemetery and Superintendent Wilds. What happened over the years is that when you put the speed dry down on the baselines and you start and it rains, you push that mud off, it creates what's known as the railroad approach. And so it raises the baselines up. And so you have a baseline that's not at grade. And a ball comes off that at a high speed, it is a danger to somebody playing third base or first base or in the infield. Because now you have a significant lift. Some of that also, not only was from the speed drive, but also was settling in certain areas in the field. So combination of just the grounds not being level was what those monies were used to create the safer playing field and to adjust the areas that had settled over time as well. So it was a combination of both. There was also sod put down on the infield. In addition to the, just where there had been some settling areas behind the pitcher's mound and I think in front of shortstop, it settled pretty good. We leveled it, put new, put new grass down, made it really nice for the kids. And we were able to really get most dollars that we could out of that remaining monies.
Kevin, I've, I've got a question for you. If, are we switching topics or are we sticking with the current topic?
I'm, you can go ahead.
Line twenty-four, or the twenty-fourth warrant, Boston Street Water Storage Tank Land Purchase. Last week at our board meeting, we talked about the right pierce engineering proposal. And I know it's, it's still a ways off of, you know, approving it and building that. This talks about purchasing land. I'm a little, I'm a little unsure of what that means.
So we've.
So do we have the land currently and we're looking to add land or switch land or move it or?
Mr. Brown, great question. And I know we haven't had a chance to dive into it in detail yet. So we've begun the assessment of what the water needs are for the community, how many gallons of tank that we need to build. All indications are pointing towards that we need to have a bigger footprint to put the water tank on than what it currently exists across the street from our DPW building. In that event, we're very likely have to find an alternative location for the tank because that site won't support much larger than what we currently have for a water tank that exists right now. In which case, we're going to have to be creative about where we put it. The most ideal location would be at the DPW facility, if it's possible. There is a little bit of a land that, that abuts the DPW area that Superintendent Crum from the water department's looked at. We've had some conversations with preliminary, very high level conversations with the landowner about what their future, what they're looking to do with that land. And if there's any opportunity where to best locate and situate the tank, if we, if in the ideal world, it might be potential, it's not determined yet, but potential to move it slightly onto the property next to us, in which case we would need to do an acquisition to take whatever little sliver that we might want to be able to fit the tank on the site. But it's not determined yet because we haven't done the full study of what, what the need is and where the best location might be at the end of the day for that need.
So this warrant article may adjust between now and, okay.
Place holder.
No, I got it. Okay, thanks.
Are there any other questions?
You're going to go on with the rest of them there, thirty?
Number thirty, that's the MS, the MS four. I think I've spoken to the board about how during the budget process, there is, we've been submitting to the state as required, the documentations to meet the standard that's laid out with the MS four stormwater requirements. We have, we're transitioning to a new consultant, our existing consultant who's done some fantastic work for us has declined to continue working for the town in its capacity as our consultant for the MS four. Preliminary, the preliminary conversations we've had with other different consultants, the cost is going to be a significant increase, potentially to bring someone on. What we're, what we'd like to do in some of the conversation is that some of the items previously that were requirements beyond the reporting need to be assessed and determined if it needs to be further addressed. We believe there are some items in the last submissions that we've done, some on the ground work that likely needs to be incorporated or performed. So the idea with this particular line item, excuse me, the particular line item is to provide a one-time infusion of money to catch up on the years past. Understand through a consultant exactly what the cost going forward is going to be. And hopefully build into the budget for fiscal '24, appropriate increase on what the consultant line item should be. The issue at hand is that there's, the cost for the ongoing will be dependent on how much we work, the work we do to catch up on what we have, that we have previously not necessarily performed to the level that was necessary to keep the, the MS four requirements moving.
So would you say, would you say in summary then that we have a line item to deal with this because we have to pay for it on an ongoing basis? Every year we got to do the reports. We'll keep that and create this other one-time cost for the consultant to do some additional summary work over the next year or something, which may cause us to have to adjust our budget down the line.
We're going to have to adjust the budget either way. We're hoping that this one time will allow us to adjust it less than we would otherwise going forward if they can catch up on some of these items.
I, I think the important thing is to ensure that our budget request is sufficient to do what we basically need to do and with, with what we understand is going to have to happen at a minimum. And then have perhaps this as extra in case the minimum isn't enough. That would be my thought. So it is that we have both.
Right now, we have.
Got it. Okay.
And then the bylaw codification, zoning specifically, we have a quote for $6,950. It is to perform the codification of the bylaw component, I'm sorry, the zoning bylaw, not, we've already performed the general bylaw, so this is the second phase of that project.
So what part of that, there was a discussion about the monies and the feeling was that zoning was included in the monies that we were spending now.
The zoning, so the, the ongoing maintenance of the, and the hosting of the web portal, that's already included in the existing contract that we have. So when we parsed out the zoning component of it years ago, they still charge us the maintenance fee, it's a flat fee, no matter how much they're doing and how much they're hosting. So when they host, after you get through the $7,000 study and they go through everything and they, excuse me, they update it, we put it on the website, the cost ongoing will not change other than a typical increase that they might charge us year over year for the service.
Okay, so this is the $7,000 in order to do the initial load of our material onto the website, so to speak.
The review.
This is that one time. Thank you.
That's great. And this is coming out of the version two budget, I'm sorry, the version, yeah, sorry, the version two omnibus budget that we present next week, or the end of this week. That will have that $7,000 reduced out of the budget.
Out of the clerk's budget.
Because it's a one-time, that's as clear as day, that's a one-time and that should really come out. So that one, we're pulling out of it. The master, so it's highlighted in orange. In the capital plan, it's recognized and it says other as the category of how we're going to fund it. We have, I put $30,000 in the capital plan for the cost. We have $25,600 left over from the assessment that we made, the article we had for the copper mine road. Because we received half of the $25,000, I believe, funding from the state, that offset that forty, I think it was $45,000 that we had. And so the, we're going to, what the idea is here is to take the leftover funds in the article for copper mine road, which again was set aside, not knowing if the state was going to give us a hundred percent grant or no, no monies. We got what we got, which is a 25 or 20,000, 20,000, I think it was. So the remaining $25,600 is available. The thought is to use that for the master plan to set aside. We have a $100,000 grant from the state. But indications from the consultants we've worked with or talked with thus far have said it probably will be a little bit more expensive than that. And so this will allow us to have some money that's set aside to ensure that we have enough to complete the project when we get the RFP back in the quotes, which we hope to have in the next month or so.
You're making the decision on the, on how the appropriation will be met. You have chosen, we don't normally do it that way, as you know. And it is up to the FinCom to decide how they suggest the appropriations to be met. I, I can see that it's supposed to feel like it's free because it's coming from someplace else. It's all the same money, Kevin, you know it as well as I do. Good try, good try. I've already talked about the, the additional beyond $100,000. I said if they really believe it's going to cost more than a hundred, that a good job is more than $150,000, then they should find the money in the grant for us to do that instead of giving us partial grant. At any rate, thank you, I understand what you have here, but I, I disagree with the idea of trying to quote, pick the funding for it. Okay, that's good. And zoning, I understand whatever, do we, do we know, well, we have some zoning that may come from the planning board. And certainly the school debt is all, of course, the elementary school debt that we've, we don't need anymore. We didn't expend it all.
That's correct.
Was authorized but not expended? Great. That's all I have.
Well, I wanted to hear more about the master plan. I think Kevin had more to say on that.
I would, I would not in any way want to misconstrue that it's free money, that twenty-six, twenty-five, six. That is an article that has monies left over. So if, if the thought would be to use it so we can clear that article out and the master plan, we don't know what it's going to come in at. It depends on the scope of work and how much we want to do with it. But the idea here was, and that's why it's in orange. Again, I said at the top, the orange are the ones that were a little bit making some ideas, putting ideas on the table for everyone to kind of chew on. If the board does not want to use the copper, leftover copper mine money for that, then we can put it into a capital item, we can put it somewhere else. But if we want to do, if the master plan.
You could just as easily put the copper mine against the MS four or the park and ball field improvements or a part of it against both of those or whatever. Any number of those things could be funded in part by the tailings, by the unused warrant article for copper mine road. You know that as well as I do. It's, okay.
Hundred percent. I, I, and I'll, I'll give you a hundred percent my thought process on this. I put on the capital plan other. If we need, I put $30,000, I said, you know, this could be, could be something we need, might not be. As we went through the process, talking with vendors, we don't have an RFP for them to respond yet. So we don't know if it's going to be $100,000, we don't know if it's going to be 130, we don't know if it's going to be 125,600. But the thought was because it's in the other category, those monies are, are available, they're there. That was the thought process. I a hundred percent agree with you, Mr. Gant. It could go to any of these other items without any problem or questions asked. Well, questions asked, absolutely, but it's, it can go to other places.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, is there anything else on this? Boy, I think it's, I think it's a good first shot.
Thank you.
I have a couple of comments in naming these things, I'll get them to you.
Okay, great. That'd be great. I'll, and while I'm working on version one, Mr. Gant, I'll, I'll, when I receive that back, I'll just update that in the, in the warrant article list.
All right, well, we're done with that. I would just remind people that on the, going back to the beginning of the recreation department, we want to get any comments on those back to Kevin and Stephanie Monday, hopefully, ideally, you were looking for, Kevin.
It would be great. If we get them by the end of the day Monday, based on the existing documents that have been presented, we'll be able to take a better version back to the TAA and other stakeholders we're talking with about the changes and give them an updated version, which would be helpful.
All right. Then absent anything else, I would say we're looking for a final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. All right, by roll call vote, Mr. Gant?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
And Mr. Hook is an aye, so that's unanimous adjournment.
Good night.
Thank you.